The May 5th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an open podium period of time when residents can come and address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Our council meetings are generally held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to speak at that time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. After scheduled speakers are concluded, we will have an opportunity for anybody else in the audience that wants to address the council. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions about that, please contact the city. The first thing tonight is a Senior Awareness Month proclamation, and I'd like to hear from our Park and Rec Director Jay Lauthammer.
Yes, Mayor, council members. This is Senior Awareness Month, and Mr. Getchow and I had the privilege last week of attending the Senior Volunteer Recognition Lunch and being able to speak and thank them for all of their service. And tonight, I think we have perfect attendance by our Senior Advisory Council here tonight, so thank you to them for coming out and being with us to help celebrate this month and recognize the good work that they do. And these are some of the people that you see tonight are people that really spend a lot of time and really care for, the programs and the people that use the Senior Center. So we'd like to invite them up, and Mayor will come down and read the presentation.
And then, you know you're going to be asked to pose for a picture, too?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Whereas the increasing number of senior citizens in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government, and whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our senior citizens, and awareness improves participation and action; and whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom which will impact our future; and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older adults; and where a Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim May 2015 to be Senior Awareness Month, adopted by the council on this day, the fifth day of May 2015. So congratulations, and thank you so much for being a part of the Senior Center. I think we've been celebrating Senior Awareness Month for at least 20 years, if not longer than that, and thank you for your leadership on the council. I've talked to a lot of seniors that I've encountered through activities that you all sponsor, and senior citizens come from all over the southwest to go to our Senior Center because of the nice friendly group we have and the great programming, so thank you very much for all that you do. Should we turn around for a picture?
Is that where it was last night?
Yeah.
Are you blocking people?
Can you see them?
Am I blocking them?
Can you get in?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming on tonight. Does that work, smell for you? It doesn't go for you.
Oh, and he kind.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Second.
Any items to add or subtract? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of minutes from the planning session held Tuesday, April 8th?
Move approval, second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, April 21st?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same date, April 21st?
So move.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar, items A through I, is there anything to pull for discussion? Nope? Okay, how about a motion, then?
Move approval of items A through I on the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is regarding the Crossroads Center, some landscape improvements and exterior improvements. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is exactly that, a request for some remodeling and landscaping improvements at Crossroads Center, which is 2.9 acres. The project calls for an exterior remodel and landscaping improvements. Quite a bit of this was due to hail damage that the property suffered in 2013, and this is a follow-up improvement project that includes facade improvements, improvements to the roof, and to canopies, and to landscaping as well. The official notice of the hearing was published in the April 23rd edition of the Eden Prairie News. This project does request one PUD waiver related to construction materials. The city code requires 75 percent face brick, natural stone, glass, cast stone, and there is one of the elevations, the north elevation, which does not fully meet that, but the other three elevations do. And as I think you'll hear in your presentation, there is quite a bit of upgrade to this property which more than makes up for the waiver, including screening and bike racks. Additionally, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the project 5-0 at their April 13th meeting, and I also believe that the project proponent is here tonight to maybe provide a quick overview and to answer any questions that you may have along with city staff.
They all have our packet of material. Good evening, I'm Scott Nelson with DJR Architecture. We're the project architects for the project, and the quick overview was very accurate. The project received some serious hail damage in a storm not quite two years ago, and instead of just replacing it, the existing panels, which were, you know, it's about a 20-year-old project, the owner desired to improve greatly the overall appearance of the project, so to update it. And in addition to that, the landscaping in front of the project on the berm is very tired. It has a bunch of sort of overgrown coniferous trees that are actually screening the building and the tenant signage. We're looking to take those out and replace those with the landscaped berms with a series of perennials and flowering shrubs and things which give it a much nicer, more modern appearance. Well, it still will have the same screening characteristics for the parking lot that is required by code. In addition, we're putting in a number of other lower deciduous trees and then pruning the existing trees up so that you still have a view to the building and keeping the overall crowns of the trees. It's really looking at, in addition to the canopy improvements, we're putting on new canvas awnings, replacing the signage with the same signage, but it'll be new on a new background and two different types of colors and cornice. And the reason we couldn't add additional brick to that upper level, and the reason we're asking for the amendment to the PUD, is that all of that material that we're replacing on the front canopy is cantilevered out on existing roof structure, so it has to be replaced, and it's an existing light metal curved canopy. There's not enough structure there to hold brick. That's why we're using a lighter EPHEA space in the canvas awnings that will be able to be supported by those materials.
One thing here, could we have him put the pictures up for, this goes out broadcast?
Okay.
You know, and I think that it would be easier if you were following along from at home, maybe to be able to see it?
Yes, on that desk.
That should work.
Okay. Whoops.
Should I, can I move it?
Yeah, that's pretty good. Other way.
Other way. And to your left, too, I think.
Right there, left.
Yeah.
You can see here, then, the look of the berm that we're re-landscaping with some boulders and perennial flowers and flowering shrubs, so you'll have a much clearer view of the building. And this is the cornice piece that we're adding.
If you come around, I'll pick you up on the lights.
Okay, great, perfect. So, you can see, this is what I was talking about with the tops of the berms, that it's all being new landscaping, but it's still on the top of the berm, so it carries the same screening of the parking lot that we had before. And then, this is all new EPHEA, and metal and EPHEA cornice and new canvas awnings. We're also going to be adding some lighting in the soffit areas of this building that will light up the area in front of all of the shops during the day, or during the evening as bright as it can be, with LED lighting. So, if there's any other questions about it, I can certainly respond.
Sure. It really looks very nice. It's a great improvement. I like the berm, the fact that the berm is stained, right? It's not been taken down at all.
Oh, it's the same exact berm.
Yeah, and I like the natural landscaping and the bike parking that you're going to provide. I think that's great, that there'll be places for bikes. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this Crossroads Center? Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for the proponent? Councilmember Nelson?
I think you called it EPHEA. This is sort of a stucco-like material.
Yeah, right, it's lighter. It's lighter than stucco.
Does it tend to stain and water stain like stucco, or is this a newer product that's less likely to do that?
We have not had any issue with it staining, and we've also, the color we're choosing is a little bit darker, so it wouldn't be as, you know, susceptible to that as would be a really light or very off-white stain.
Yeah, I know that some older buildings that are true stucco around town start showing their age quite quickly, or maybe they've been there for a long time, huh?
We haven't had that issue with EPHEA.
With this. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 2.9 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district review within the commercial regional service zoning district on 2.9 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. When do you think you'll be starting?
The idea is to start the construction for this as soon as we can permit it following this meeting. I'm sure it will probably be under construction in June.
Okay, great.
So, it'll be done this summer.
Great, thank you. The next item is a public hearing to consider cable franchise application. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, the city of Eden Prairie is part of a group of cities, Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, Hopkins, Richfield, and Edina, that is part of the Southwest Cable Commission, where a group of cities represented by elected officials and staff consider and deal with basically all things related to cable and cable franchises. You may recall, earlier this year, we approved a transfer of our franchise from Comcast to Great Land Connections, and you've also seen the update that that deal that was initially proposed between Comcast and Time Warner was unraveled, undone, and there will be no changes to that. So even though you made that approval, you do not need to come back and take any subsequent action. That issue is final, and Comcast continues to operate. So I wanted to give you that update, but the purpose for this public hearing is, for the first time in at least 15 years, I think it is, our city, and many, many cities in the metro area, and all those in our commission, have been approached by a competitor to Comcast, CenturyLink, to provide cable television services in Eden Prairie. And there is nothing that precludes our city or other cities to have more than one franchise agreement. So recently, we put out a notice of intent to receive proposals for those that may wish to franchise in Eden Prairie, and we did receive an application from CenturyLink, which is included in your packet. Tonight's action, unlike many of the other public hearings we have, doesn't actually request you to have any specific action at this time other than to hold this public hearing. It would be a future consideration, a future meeting, a future agenda item that you would possibly be looking at an actual franchise agreement. But that being said, our attorney with the Southwest Cable Commission, Brian Grogan, is here to present an overview of this entire issue and this application, and all issues related to state and federal law and possible actions by our city council in the future related to this topic.
Mr. Getchow, at some point in time when the potential franchise agreement comes to us, will we have to have another public hearing, then?
I believe that we would, Mayor. Yes, we would have to have a public hearing to consider that particular franchise agreement.
Mr. Grogan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The good news is, Mr. Getchow covered both my introduction and my conclusion, so it just got shorter. But we are here tonight to talk about competitive franchising, and really what I wanted to do is give you just a little bit of an overview of the state and federal law. You won't have to make a decision tonight, but we wanted you to have the benefit of some of these issues so that as the franchise comes before you, within probably the next couple of months, you'll have this background. We also did receive today a letter from Comcast stating their concerns about the competitive franchise. We weren't able to get that into your packet, obviously, as part of the agenda, but we'll provide that at a subsequent meeting so that you can have the benefit of Comcast's input. Federal Cable Act provides a number of different purposes. One of those is to promote competition in the communications industry. The other issue that's relevant to competitive franchising is that a franchising authority, which the city of Eden Prairie serves as, can award more than one franchise within a jurisdiction, except that you may not grant an exclusive franchise, and you must not unreasonably refuse to award an additional competitive franchise. So if we're wondering, what's the standard of review? We shall not act to unreasonably refuse to award the competitive franchise. And frankly, I'm not aware of too many cases where a qualified cable television operator has been denied a cable franchise. The law really favors competition as opposed to promoting a single provider or monopoly scenario. So the franchise application timeline here in Minnesota is actually fairly detailed. It requires notice to any interested party to submit an application. There's certain timing deadlines we have to meet. There's the conduct of this public hearing to consider the application, and then ultimately the consideration of a franchise. I've provided in the outline before you this evening the dates of publication, as well as the closing date of the applications. As Mr. Getchow stated, we only received one application, and that was from CenturyLink. The next steps in this process are that we will be preparing a report for the commission's consideration regarding CenturyLink's legal, technical, financial qualifications. Ultimately, we'll be negotiating a franchise, a model franchise with CenturyLink. To the extent it's acceptable to the commission, we'll bring that back with a recommendation from the commission to the city council. No matter what the commission does, or any of the other member cities, this city council stands as the decision-making body for Eden Prairie. So, again, no matter what the commission or any other cities do, you'll be making the decision separately as it relates to your residents. There is a provision in the existing Comcast franchise, recalling that we adopted this franchise about two years ago. The city council did approve that, and it contains one provision that is known as competitive equity. What it basically says is Comcast required that the city include a provision that if we grant a franchise to a competitor, we will not grant it on more favorable or less burdensome terms. If we do, then they get to opt into that contract. So our, at least initial strategy for the commission is, we expect to present, and we already have presented, the identical copy of the Comcast franchise to CenturyLink for their comment. Our hope is that the document we bring back to you mirrors that contract as much as possible so that there aren't any practical differences between the two. That way, the city is really staying out of this competition. We're going to let these two providers go out, provide the services to the residents, and the residents will make the decision that they, for the operator, they believe best fits their needs. We do have a couple of other statutory provisions that are relevant for your consideration. One is that we're not to grant a franchise on terms, again, more favorable or less burdensome with respect to the area served. And a second provision of state law says that when you're granting an initial franchise, which is what this would be, that construction has to be made throughout the franchise area and has to be substantially completed within five years of the initial award of the franchise. This is going to be an issue that will be probably the biggest hurdle we'll face with the CenturyLink proposal. Staff has already viewed some maps, and I believe a few other representatives of the city have reviewed some maps. CenturyLink is not proposing to build to the entire city, but rather to a portion of the city, and to the extent their business plan is successful, they intend to continue to build, assuming people subscribe to the services that they're offering. That doesn't necessarily tie out straight to what the state statutory requirement is. CenturyLink relies instead on an FCC order, generally referred to as a 621 order, and in that order, the relevant provision says that it's unlawful for a city to refuse to grant a competitive franchise on the basis of an unreasonable build-out mandate. As you can see from these two slides, we have a conflict between what our state law says and what the federal law says, and the question we're going to grapple with is, which one applies, and how do we burn that into the franchise that'll ultimately be presented for your consideration? I'm not going to go through this slide, but I provide this for your background of what the FCC's vision of unreasonable or reasonable build-out mandates are. Again, we'll be briefing the commission and the city council before a franchise is presented. So tonight, we're not expecting to answer that question, but rather, we wanted you to have the benefit of recognizing that this is an issue. I'm sure you may have read about Minneapolis having already considered some of this and is in the process of considering a final contract. I suspect that the newspaper will be providing more and more comments about CenturyLink's competitive plans, and Comcast may also be out in the press describing their views of that. So we wanted to brief you on the issue. Again, I won't go through this slide in detail, except to say that the FCC order spoke directly to the question of whether it preempt state law or local law decisions. And for purposes of this meeting tonight, there isn't a clear answer to this question. If there were, we'd provide it to you right now, and we would avoid the suspense of the issue, but there is not a clear answer. Minneapolis has tried to come up with a plan that they believe meets state law and also captures the spirit of the FCC decision. I think CenturyLink may have some comments for you tonight regarding their views of this, but we will absolutely brief the city council on this when we present the final franchise. Again, at stake here is whether all the residents in Eden Prairie will have the benefit of competition, or only some of those residents. And we know that all elected officials, of course, want the benefits of competition to as many folks as possible, ideally to everyone, and that's the goal that we're going to be striving for in these negotiations. So, final point I'd leave you with is that this is a quasi-judicial decision, meaning the city really isn't in a position, or shouldn't be in a position, to prejudge this issue. Rather, we should allow CenturyLink to state its position, anyone who opposes that, perhaps Comcast, to present its position. In the end, you'll make your determination. It's listed or considered a quasi-judicial decision, so we'll probably have you generate findings of fact to support the ultimate decision that you make as part of your franchise. And I'll obviously be working closely with your city attorney to make sure that that's prepared in a format that you're comfortable with and that meets the findings that the city has ultimately concluded. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, and I know you do have representatives of CenturyLink here. I'm not sure if I see representatives of Comcast tonight, but thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grogan? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this cable franchise issue? It's very complex, so if you're just hearing it for the first time, you probably don't understand what's going on, so.
Is that my cue?
Sure, go ahead.
Should I speak up here?
Yes. Yeah, you might tilt that one mic on the side over.
All right, okay. Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tyler Middleton. I'm CenturyLink's Vice President of Operations for Minnesota. I'm going to speak a little bit to the technical and operational, financial wherewithal that CenturyLink has to bring this service to market, and then my colleague, Patrick Hager, he's going to talk to some of the legal issues and expand on some of the comments that Mr. Grogan made. As has been alluded to, Comcast and its predecessors have had a monopoly on wireline cable service in this area for well over 30 years, since the early 1980s. And CenturyLink is here today to bring both choice and competition to that market that heretofore has not been available. I would elaborate and say that even though we may not be able to bring the service to every single household immediately, I do believe all consumers will benefit because Comcast will have to react in the general marketplace, in terms of another competitor being here, both in terms of price, the service they offer, the features and the functionality. It simply raises the bar for everybody to compete. So CenturyLink currently offers a television service called Prism, which is an IPTV-based product, which means it runs over the internet or over the internet protocol. It provides a very high-quality digital picture. In fact, from a number of HD channels perspective, right now, the industry leader is widely considered DirecTV with about 160 channels. We come to market with about 250 HD channels right out of the gate. We also support all the pig programming, local channels, all these stations and programming that you would come to expect from other providers. This is a different kind of technology, though. We can provide, for example, four live streams on television at once, a whole-home DVR that allows you to record four programs all at once and then view them anywhere in your household. We have something we actually refer to as warp channel change, which simply means when you press the button, for those of you who are that kind of surfer, it's very quick. There's no delay in going from channel to channel because of the technology. We also have wireless connectivity to each of the set-top boxes, so if you want to take your television and take it from your living room to your kitchen, to your garage, out to your deck, maybe to your screen porch tonight to watch The Wild Game, you can do that without being tethered to wherever the local coaxial connection might be. The way we deliver the product to each of the households is over a combination of the new fiber-to-the-home, one-gigabit network that we're currently building throughout parts of the Twin Cities, or over our existing network, which is a combination of fiber and copper. It's a hybrid network that goes to many of, most of the homes today. The only real common denominator that we need in order to deliver that service, and this is a bit of an oversimplification, but if we have 25 megabits of speed of our internet connection, then we can offer the service to those homes. And we're working to upgrade that network and continue to build out that one-gigabit network to do so. In terms of our wherewithal to do this, CenturyLink is an $18 billion company. We are Fortune 153, so we have the financial wherewithal to bring this service to market. We are widely considered the third-largest telecommunications provider in the country. We provide traditional voice and internet services to residential customers in 37 states across the country, and to business customers in town here, the likes of US Bank, United Health Group, Target, Super Value right down the road. We provide voice, data, cloud, and managed services nationally, and in fact internationally, with cloud computing capabilities in 58 locations across the world. Closer to home here in Minnesota, we employ approximately 3,000 people, the majority of those jobs located here in the Twin Cities area, and more of half of those employees are members of the Communication Workers of America Union that we're very proud to have. That includes 500 network technicians, the guys and gals out in the field today taking care of and caring for our network. care of and caring for our network, who are going to be and are being cross-trained to support the Prism product, although part of what we're already offering is what they already do today. And we also employ another 100 network engineers who work in partnership with the operations team to design, build, and deploy the service. We currently offer Prism television in 14 select markets across the country today. Some larger markets are Phoenix, Denver, and Las Vegas. Here in the Midwest, we have it down the river in La Crosse, Wisconsin, Omaha, Nebraska, Jefferson City, and Columbia, Missouri. So it's a mature, leading-edge product. We announced in our earnings call today that we now are passing over 2.5 million households and have over 350,000 customers using Prism today, a number that is dramatically growing based on our accelerated deployment in more large markets as we speak. So as you know from our application, this is a very significant investment in your community in order to bring it to bear, both in the product and the technological infrastructure, the employees, the labor, the jobs that we bring to market, and we are ready to bring the product to this market shortly. As was recently stated, we expect actually to be able to turn it on in several markets across the Twin Cities as early as June pending final franchise approvals. So we're very excited about the opportunity to bring choice to your residents and competition to this market. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Haggerty for a few more remarks.
Mayor, council members, my name is Patrick Haggerty. I represent CenturyLink in terms of local government affairs, legislative affairs, as well as public policy in the Midwest region. I'm here tonight. My colleague, Mr. Milton, spoke to the considerations of the applications we've submitted for the cable franchise in terms of the legal, technical, and financial abilities of our company or capabilities of our company to come into the marketplace and compete. Unique to typically the legal discussion is Minnesota and the statute that Mr. Grogan pointed out earlier that requires two things of us, actually. One, level playing field, and two, the five-year minimum build-out requirement. Level playing field in most parts we're agreeable to. Five-year minimum build-out plan is something that, as a company currently making a significant investment into the marketplace just to get our first customer, obviously puts a lot of risk out there for us. So that's one of those components of the statute that we believe is in direct conflict with the FCC's 2007 621 order, as Brian pointed out. So I want to share with you a couple of quotes right out of the order that I think speak directly to the contradictions. So in 2007, the FCC issued its findings with respect to competition in the video marketplace. Since '92, Congress has been trying to find a way to encourage or incent competition in the video marketplace. With respect to the level playing field requirements in 2007, the FCC stated that such mandates unreasonably impede competitive entry into the multi-channel video marketplace by requiring local franchise and authorities to grant franchises to competitors on substantially the same terms imposed on the incumbent cable operators. So in other words, it is a barrier to entry. For a second incumbent with zero customers making a significant investment into the infrastructure that allows us to provide the content, the video content, putting implications like that in front of that provider are absolutely a barrier to entry. With respect to mandatory build-out, the FCC, quote, "An LFA's or local franchise and authorities said to yourselves, refusal to grant a competitive franchise because of an applicant's unwillingness to agree to an unreasonable build-out mandate constitutes an unreasonable refusal to award the competitive franchise." So again, as the FCC studied the issue and tried to understand why competition wasn't flourishing in the video marketplace, these are a couple of the items they identified that were true barriers to allowing, to preventing companies like ours even considering the marketplace. And then lastly, I'd read out, "In support of its findings, the FCC noted that because a second provider realistically cannot count on acquiring a share of the market similar to the incumbent's share, the second entrant cannot justify a large initial deployment. Rather, a new entrant must begin offering service within a smaller area to determine whether it can reasonably ensure a return on its investment before expanding." And that's almost exactly what we're proposing to do. Allow us to come in to a portion of the market, make that initial significant investment to provide a competitive alternative to that area of the market, allow us to determine our success. Our success would then trigger the additional investment to further build out, and it would kind of stair-step in that regard. It gives us a more risk-tolerant position in terms of that investment, allows us to determine initially on the front end whether we will be successful. As Tyler pointed out, the incumbent's been in place for 30 years. We don't know whether or not we can come into the market in June and be successful. So this gives us an opportunity that aligns with what the FCC has recommended, to come in and take a shot at offering a competitive video offering to your constituents. The FCC went further to state a commitment to an initial build with further build-out requirements being determined by success in the market is reasonable. We agree, and a lot of our franchises across the country reflect this. So it's a model we've presented. We're operating or in negotiations or already have franchises in areas across the country, and a lot of our franchise agreements reflect this model. Again, an initial build threshold, a success measure beyond that, and trigger to build further if that success measure is achieved. So I'll just close by saying, you know, the industry I represent is not unfamiliar with monopolies. In fact, a lot of my more tenured colleagues will refer to those as the good old days. I can tell you, '96, when the FCC took their effort at our industry to initiate competition, to really incent competition, we had almost 100% of the market in voice services. Today, here in the state of Minnesota, we have 26% of the market in voice services. So in a little less than 20, a little less than 20 years, the free-market concept, the marketplace itself, has created options for customers. It's incented technological advances, even in voice services, as we all know, and have the gadgets on us probably somewhere. But competition works, and we're hoping to get that initiated here in your community. So Tyler or Mr. Milton, I will sure stand for questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Haggerty, Mr. Middleton, or Mr. Grogan again?
I do, I'm, though initially, I do have questions for both of you, just a second, though. Our only responsibility tonight is to actually hold this and then close the public hearing and make no decision, but it says in our notes here, "The city must now hold a public hearing to consider." We're not actually holding the public hearing to consider. We're holding the public hearing to receive.
Information.
Feedback.
Councilmember Case, Mayor, I think the consideration is of the applications, so that.
We're not making a decision on that.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, I just questioned that wording. Okay, just a couple of thoughts here. I know, and I think it was with the last franchise agreement with Comcast, but there actually was a discussion, and then they ended up laying fiber between our public buildings. Was that, and so will they, will any new group coming in be held to that level of actually at least, I don't know if you pay rent then for that cable, but Brian's probably a question for you, but that was something we actually received from the city, free fiber between all of our public buildings.
Thank you again. Brian Grogan, Councilmember Case, the, we've had discussions already with CenturyLink's technical representatives, and they've come out to review the connection between Eden Prairie and Edina and the playback facilities that we have in place there. We haven't seen the technical solution they're going to present, but they're aware of how we distribute our PEG programming, and they've committed to match those obligations. We haven't drilled down to the exact technical solution they're going to provide, but we are working that issue.
So does this duplicate the public access studio concept?
No, the, in the case of the commission, the studio is provided by Bloomington. We subcontract with Bloomington for the studio, so the funding, in other words, they'll have to match the identical funding that Comcast provides.
Got it. So we'll double our funding for our current facilities for a while. I know that Comcast has a.
Actually, it, it may not work exactly like that in the sense that as CenturyLink gains customers, to the extent they gain them to the expense of Comcast, it may be a revenue-neutral outcome for the commission or the city. Now, if new customers come onboard, which actually there's some precedent for, as these two companies advertise, more customers may come to the market initially, so it could increase funding in that way.
So I guess back to both of you, but Brian, you could stand there in case this impacts you, but the same services, like I know Comcast bundles voice, video, data, I'm assuming CenturyLink would come in and offer bundled voice, video, data services?
Yes, absolutely, in terms of options for whether you buy one or all three, voice, data, video, and then from a video perspective, there'd be packages not dissimilar from what Comcast might offer. Go ahead.
So it's just an article in the Bloomberg Weekly whatever, I think, yesterday or something, that it's just not about cable, it's about internet, which is why Comcast pulled out. So I'm assuming for all of you, it's really not about cable, it's about internet.
It's about both. I mean, certainly.
Good answer, but.
Video is an application over, over the internet, but as I stated earlier, as we're building out this one-gigabit network, that's fiber to the side of a house, and that's 1,000 megabits per second up and down. And so it is a, it is absolutely, it's part of our business case, if we can have a triple play, it does change the dynamics for us in terms of attracting customers, retaining them, and being able to justify the expansion of more and faster internet speeds in greater areas. We're not shy about that.
No, and shouldn't be.
Councilmember Case, I may add to your initial part of your question. To your point, our product, our content, the networks we carry, all of that are going to be very similar to the incumbents. We may package them differently. We approach the marketplace from a value perspective. We want our consumers to get a lot out of the different tiers and packages we offer, but ultimately, and I think there's precedent set for this, too, when you look at an additional wireline competitor in the marketplace, what typically rises is the quality of service and the service itself. That's, that's how we differentiate it ourselves, is we win customers by the fact that we take better care of them, so to speak. So I'd just add that pricing isn't always the, but, but good things, other good things come.
We've hoped for competition for, and nothing against Comcast whatsoever, competition's good, and we just looked for, for years, our commission, was it '99, 2000, when we had the, or 2001, when we had the two possibilities come through?
Correct.
And then the tech crisis, and they just dissipated, but we've wanted this for a long time, so I see this as a positive.
Councilmember Aho.
A couple of questions, and probably more for you than Mr. Grogan. What percentage of Eden Prairie residents would you say that you now serve in terms of any kind of service?
Any kind of service?
Yes.
It's, in terms of passing houses or connecting to houses, it's very high. I would guess it's in the 99 or 100% range in terms of voice and internet services.
And so in terms of, if you were to be able to provide the Prism service, what percentage of residents would you be able to provide that out of the, out of the box or out of the gate, so to speak, before you would have to, you know, really determine, is this a viable business model where you're going to expand? Do you have a, do you have a feel for that in terms of numbers or in terms of percentages?
I can maybe reference some other franchise language we're currently working with across the country, as well as here in the Twin City metropolitan area. Our initial commitment to build, we've set as 15%. That is our business case. If we can get an agreement to initially invest into 15% of the marketplace within the first two years of the plan, and then within that two-year period of time or on anniversaries that can be negotiated, we determine that our level of success is at such a degree of penetration within that original 15%, it then would trigger an additional 15% to build out, if that answers your question.
So basically, within the first two years, you could potentially service 15% of the households in Eden Prairie. But right now, you would, in terms of having the capacity, in other words, having fiber to the household or, or the other technologies that you quoted, being available now, what, is there, is there any of that available in Eden Prairie to date as of right now?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we are going to leverage the existing infrastructure we have in place, and that's really the, what I refer to as the hybrid fiber and copper network that goes to many of the homes. And to the extent that we can deliver, and it's not just as simple as 25 megabits per second, that's why it's a little bit hard to answer, because we have to do some things to that existing network to make it receptive to a video signal. It's one thing for it to carry voice, another thing for it to carry internet data, but video is much more sensitive to the quality and a lot of other components technically, so it's a little bit of an art versus a science.
I'm an electrical engineer, I do IT every day, so, and I deal with, with the providers all the time, so very familiar.
Obviously, our intent is that, as we said, we can't be committed to a build-out that we can't step up to having zero customers as we start, but our intent is we, there's a lot of investment we have to make just to get the content into this general marketplace. And so the more homes that we can enable for the service that can, we can, we can get subscribers from, it's to our benefit and to yours. So we're, we have a mutual goal there in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
I may add, Councilmember Aho, real quickly, if this is where you're going, as an engineer, this may have not been your question, but I imagine it's on the mind. Throughout our travels across metropolitan area and all the different communities we're working with currently, the media has somewhat picked up on our hesitancy to provide specific numbers in a public setting, and that, I think, is taken or perceived as a transparency question. We have no issue with sitting down in a non-public forum, showing you our exact deployment plans, showing where you will, where we will initially deploy, the number of households we'll initially deploy. Where we get sensitive to that, and it's for good reason, is that it's extremely competitive. In other marketplace, we've had employees followed, we've had, you know, we put signs out in yards that says Prism is here, and next thing you know, you have the competitor's door-knocking team in the door, in the, in the neighborhood that evening, offering these long-term contracts that shut potential consumers of ours out. So I, if we're headed towards that, can you give me specifics? We're really hesitant to do that, and it's primarily because it's so sensitive, but outside of that, we're more than happy to share.
I was just trying to get a understanding of if, you know, if you had a current footprint that would, and technology platform in place, infrastructure that would allow you to deploy out of the gate, or if that was going to be completely a totally new investment in terms of being able to provide Prism services, and that's really what I was trying to.
Yeah, we are leveraging the existing infrastructure to the extent we can. We have to upgrade it. We are augmenting it with more capacity in terms of the bandwidth that's needed to make this whole thing work, and then as we can, we are building even the fiber-to-the-home capability as fast as we can. So, yes.
All right, thank you.
All the above.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I assume from what you just said, you aren't going to tell us then that you're planning to go into the northeast or southeast or northwest corner of Eden Prairie at this point?
No, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's where we already have a lot of our technology, so it's kind of inherent. Wherever it is today will be enabled, so there's really no overt plan to go one place versus another. We're just trying to.
But you're not saying where that is, correct?
Well, we'd be happy to show you where that is on maps, just not in a public forum where competitors can see it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, appreciate you coming, and thank you to Councilmember Case, who served on the Cable Commission for many, many years, and Councilmember Nelson, who's now our representative on the Cable Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I had already asked if there was anybody in the audience that wanted to address this public hearing, but we've gotten some new information. Is there anybody now who wishes to speak or ask a question? Okay, no one? All right.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payment of claims is our motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second, any items to question? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens.
Aye.
The next item is an ordinance, first reading of an ordinance amending our city code, Chapter Four, relating to alcohol, taprooms, and brew pubs. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council there. That's exactly it. We're looking at some amendments to our code related to alcohol for quite a number of reasons. First, related to the potential of taprooms that have come into the metropolitan area and how our code can be up to date. That also relates to brew pubs. We also have some proposed revisions, which other cities have undertaken, related to our mixture of sales in restaurants with food and alcohol. We also have some housekeeping updates in the ordinance itself due to changes in state law from the last several years all the way up through this weekend. And I do not want to steal the thunder of the city attorney by doing his introduction or his closing, so I can turn it right over to him, and he's going to provide a presentation on several of these changes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, how lucky you are tonight to get to hear from two attorneys.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sure you're thrilled. Actually, the title of this, before I left the office, was, the tagline was belly up to the bar. And not taprooms, brew pubs, crawlers, and food, but I chickened out. Mr. Getchell is correct. Mr. Getchow is correct, the legislature, as late as Friday, passed the legislation, the governor signed it that day, so we scrambled a little bit. We had anticipated the changes because we had been following the law, and had revised the ordinance so that, basically, what we would have to do is insert new references to state law chapters, and then take into account the change in times, the hours of operation, and the Sunday sales. And so, we were able to do that on Monday. I have a new copy that incorporates all those changes, and that's what the first reading is on. We provided that to the city. We were not able to get a golden rod before you. It's of no consequence, what you have in front of you is substantively the same with the changes that I've just mentioned. So, all right. Where do I point this? Over there, it's not going to work.
It might be too far away.
I might be too far away. Okay, so if we could just go to the next slide, that'd be great. So I want to review for you and lay the, basically, the foundation, and there's only eight slides, so I could see.
The eyes.
How long is this going to take?
Grabbing our pillows and...
Yeah, all right, yeah. And because some of the terms may be new, and there are differences between the types of licenses now that we will be issuing, and I want you to have an understanding of what they are. So we can issue a brew pub on-sale license. Now, that's a license issued to a brewer with a restaurant. So when you think of brew pub, think of a restaurant, all right? We can issue a brew pub off-sale, which is the sale of growlers. So think of a restaurant being able to sell growlers off-sale, and that is also allowed. We can issue a brewer taproom on-sale. In the general parlance, it's called a taproom, the statute calls it a brewer taproom. A brewer taproom on-sale is really the non-restaurant alternative to drinking craft beers, or beers that are manufactured onsite or in a facility right adjacent to the taproom. So because food is not normally served at these establishments, it's something that Eden Prairie hasn't had malt liquor, strong beer, being served in a facility that does not have a restaurant. And I'll get back to the food later in the presentation. And then, there's the small brewer off-sale, that's the growler. So a taproom can also sell growlers off-sale. So you see, the legislature chose to call that a small brewer off-sale, as opposed to a brewer taproom on-sale. That's basically why I wanted to review for you. But the difference is really between the brew pub and the taproom. Brew pub, think restaurant, taproom, think doesn't have to have food. So if, for any members of the council, for myself, others who may not have known what a growler was before we started the conversation, it's malt liquor, strong beer, sold off-sale in a container, and the state law says it has to be in a 64-ounce container, commonly known as a growler. That's right out of the statute. They wanted to make sure we knew, all in 750-milliliter bottles. Now, a growler, we're now authorized to sell a growler through a brew pub or a taproom on Sundays if you so authorize. We have that in the ordinance, but this is the first reading, and we're looking for your feedback on all of this.
Mr. Getchow, do we allow growlers now? I'm not Mr. Getchow, I'm sorry.
I think you're Mr. Russell, but the answer is, we do not, do we?
Well, the question I had was, we had a brew pub, didn't we, up where Osaka is? And we allowed them to do growlers, and then they shortly thereafter went out of business.
I believe that growlers were previously authorized under law, but it's the Sunday sale aspect that allows, that is changed in the law, and they were operating as a restaurant at the time.
Yes, they were, yes.
So I'm with that sticky case. So a brew pub, a little more detail. It's a restaurant operated in the place of manufacture. So you can't have a brew pub and bring in any, I don't want to single out any of the common national brands, but you can't bring in any of those national brands. It's selling the malt liquor that you produce onsite or in a facility right adjacent to you. You need a brew pub license. Because a brew pub is a restaurant, it can also sell hard liquor, wine, in addition to beer, and it can sell the national brands of beer as well, because it can, as a restaurant, it can qualify for all of those licenses. Again, it can sell a growler off-sale with a separate license. There are some strict requirements or limitations. A manufacturer of any one facility may not exceed 3,500 barrels of malt liquor in a year, with not more than 500 sold as growlers. So I did the math, because I wanted to know how much this would cut into the sales at the Eden Prairie Liquor Store. And 3,500 barrels of malt liquor in a year is 268,000 pints. That's a lot of pints to go shipping out of one facility. So the entire production, except for the growlers, is for consumption on tap at the location. And in addition, because it's a restaurant, it can sell on Sundays as a restaurant. So now, the taproom. The taproom is licensed, is limited to the sale of the malt liquor, previously referred to as strong beer, again, manufactured onsite. Now, a taproom, the manufacturer at all facilities of the taproom may not exceed 250,000 barrels of malt liquor a year. So one might think that the taprooms then are larger establishments, because they can not exceed 250,000 as opposed to 3,500, but that is not often the case. Many times, the taprooms are small establishments. It's just one of the, what I think is a quirk in the law, and somebody lobbied for those numbers. Each brewer may only have one taproom license. So you're not going to have, there are some common taproom licenses in Minneapolis, for instance, it's not going to be one of those, because they have a taproom license, so. Beer is consumed onsite, taproom may sell on Sundays, and no food is required, but currently the way the ordinance I drafted is written, is that they may sell food on Sundays. And I'll get through the rest of the slides, and we'll come back to that issue, because I've had further discussions with Mr. Getchow and Mr. Reynolds about the sale of food by a taproom.
Oh, you said initially, food on Sundays, but you...
I'm sorry, food, period.
Food, period, okay.
The taproom can sell on-sale on Sundays.
Okay.
The food is the separate issue. So then, we get to a small brewer. The small brewer is the off-sale of growlers, and that's, the taproom gets that license, a separate license, to sell off-sale. It can be issued to a taproom, it can be issued to a brewer with no taproom, the brew pub. A qualifying brewer can get an on-sale taproom license, an off-sale tap, small brewer license, or both. But for our understanding of it, I think we just keep brew pub and taproom, those are the two main categories. The days and hours of operation have been expanded by the legislature for what you can allow. Essentially, on the slide, we show the hours as provided for in the proposed ordinance, it's the 8:00 AM opening that is new in state law, and you've probably read about that in the newspaper. That's early. The council doesn't need to do that, and it's an option. You would have to specifically allow that, and if you don't want to, we would change the ordinance. So the other change that we made in the ordinance dealt with the principal part of business. You're familiar that our hotel and restaurant license requires that 50% of the sales be attributed to food, and then the other 50 can be liquor. And in discussions with the city manager and the police chief, we determined to propose to the council that that be lowered to 40% food and 60% alcohol. The reason is that with all the new beers that are out there, the specialty beers being manufactured, they are demanding a higher price for those beers. So it is becoming competitively more difficult for a restaurant to sell a $9 beer, or a $10 beer, with a $8.50 hamburger, and meet that requirement. And so, it's trying to respond to the businesses in the community, trying to get a little bit ahead of the game. Everybody right now is meeting the 50% requirement. One, maybe two, but likely one is close, being monitored, watched, to make sure that they're still in compliance, but just trying to get ahead of not putting one of our businesses in a bad situation of not being in compliance with the ordinance. So those are the major changes. The city currently allows brew pubs, which are restaurants that sell beer. This is to allow the taprooms and authorize the Sunday sales. Now, let's go back for a second to this issue of the taproom and food. And, there we go. So I said, no food is required, but it may sell food. And as I was trying to get a handle on all this, in order to present it in a coherent fashion to you, I realized that if a taproom doesn't have to sell food, but it can sell food, it doesn't need to be a restaurant. And so, a taproom could have 149 seats, offer food, and not have to worry about meeting the 50/50 or the 40/60 rule. And I thought about that, and we had a discussion in the office, do I have this right? Am I reading the statute correctly? And determined that I was, so I placed the call to the police chief and the city manager today to say, this is an anomaly of what is going on with this. Does that put our existing restaurants in a competitive disadvantage? Is this something that the council would like to do, not like to do? It's not, obviously, for any of us to make the decision, but determined that we bring it to you for your consideration. We can, we have the authority to say, a taproom may not sell food. It's been suggested, and it might be harder to write, that a taproom can sell snacks that are prepackaged, pretzels, peanuts. I don't know, then you get to, can you buy pizza, can you sell a pizza that's prepackaged? You know, it's a slippery slope. The manner in which taprooms operate generally is that people bring in their own food, people order food from menus that are placed there by nearby restaurants, you call it in, or you stop at one of the nearby restaurants, pick up your food, go to the taproom, and have your beer with your food. So that's one of the decisions that we want to, one of the topics we'd like the council to address, to give us a little more guidance on where to go.
Maybe that you just force them kind of to become a brew pub. I mean, you know, if they want to serve food, then they could go the other route and apply for the other license, become a restaurant.
That's the exact conversation we had in the office today.
That, Councilmember Case, that's pretty much what I was going to say to elaborate. You've got, you've got taproom, which the phenomenon, and it's a new phenomenon, so this is, you know, partially addressing, you know, this major growth in this new area, this new area, where it's very, very atypical that food is served as part of the taproom, but I think there have been maybe one or two that have expanded in the metro area that have had food. But I think we would really be confusing things with, you know, as you said, you could be a restaurant, you could be a brew pub, of which we have, have, or have had in Eden Prairie, or you can be a taproom. It's a pretty simple, straightforward continuum.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I have one question. You know, you've said that it can only be the beer or malt liquor, whatever you're calling it, brewed on-site. What happens if a small brewer then, you know, they have a standard type of our beer, and they have our beer fall, and our beer winter? Can they sell each of those then, if it's all, you know, it's a small operation, but they do have a couple of types during the year?
Yes, as long as they're manufactured onsite or adjacent, basically, it's onsite, adjacent to.
Yeah. Is this ever going to apply to a winery that might want a site? You know, and they usually are adjacent to large fields of grapes. Will this ever go to a winery that wants to have one tasting room off-site into a community?
It would require a change in the law.
So this is beer only, not wine? Or could a winery actually do their wine there?
No.
No, so it's beer...
No, this is for malt liquor.
For malt liquor only. Is there a reason why we're limiting it to malt liquor and not wine?
You'd have to ask the legislature. The legislature is the one that's limiting it, not us.
Oh, okay, fine.
And Councilmember Nelson, I think, but you have touched on, again, another growth area, whether it's winery, and there's also now the growth of distilleries. So you're also seeing places open that are distilling their own spirits onsite and offering sale of those as well. So we don't have any of that in here tonight, but that also is a future possibility, maybe at some point down the road, but this is about beer.
So to elaborate a little bit further, if someone wanted to do that with a winery right now, they'd need to be a restaurant. I mean, if they had enough space to produce the wine and wanted to sell what they made, as opposed to buying it from the distributor, one, they'd have to get around that provision of state law about buying from the distributor the wine, but then, they'd have to be a restaurant then.
Yeah, I was just thinking that in some other parts of the country, they do have one off-site wine tasting room, where they, you can purchase from, but this is a different thing, so.
Okay, Councilmember Wickstrom?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to that taproom notion, and particularly, a small business. I remember it was a taproom in northeast Minneapolis, and it was great, it was very small, only sold five different kinds of beers that they brewed right on-site, very, very small place. But I remember it was really difficult, because you'd want to eat something, and there was really nothing close by to eat, and so now, they offered food, and that seemed like a good idea. And I think a small business should be able to decide to do that, or not.
They could be a brew pub.
Yeah, but it's just a small business. So what is the difference? I mean, is the size? Because we're not, we're talking about barrels. So this is 250,000 barrels, what is it for a brew pub?
Well, this is at all, 250,000 is at all their facilities. It's 3,500 for a brew pub at the location, so they're not apples-to-apples on this. And it's the policy debate we had today in my office, in my talking with Mr. Getchow and Chief Reynolds, about what is fair with respect to the small, the small taproom. Should they be allowed to bring in food? If you want them to bring in food, my analogy, my point in the conversations was, perhaps that cuts into, then, what I call, the mid-market casual meal that a restaurant will serve, an upgraded hamburger, a pork sandwich, something that's more than the fast-food place. But in order to do that, they need a restaurant license and need to meet the 50/50. Are you going to allow a taproom to serve that same kind of sandwich, but not have to meet the 50/50 and have 150 seats? They could have 10 seats, provide that same kind of meal, and have the competitive opportunity not to have to meet the 150 seats, and not to have the full license operating.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure that we're not eliminating any kind of a business model that, like a small, a small company or small business would want to do. And the places that I've been don't really have the fancy sandwiches, but they do have something more than peanuts and... something more than peanuts and popcorn. You know, sort of in between what you just described and what is a packaged thing. So I wouldn't want to restrict a business of, with a model. I think it's better to have more options than fewer options, personally.
Councilmember Aho?
So in this definition, as I'm hearing it, basically a taproom could never become just a, what I would term a classic definition of a bar that would serve liquors, hard liquors, and other, other alcohol. They are only limited to the, the malt liquor that is produced on-site, and that's, that's all they're going to sell.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I think in terms of the conversation that Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom just had and, and you, in terms of, you know, limiting small businesses, I understand the, the desire not to limit small businesses, but I think, I think you also have to be fair to the businesses that we currently have and, and are restricting them in terms of, you know, the restrictions that you mentioned, the percentage of food, the number of seats, all those different things. So to just open it up, a new classification and say, you don't have to abide by all those same classifications that the, you know, that the current businesses do, isn't really fair to them either. So, and they're all small businesses typically as well. So, you know, I, I think if they want to, if they want to sell food, become a brew pub, have, have that, you know, have that licensure, and then, then you can sell food.
Councilmember Case?
Yeah, go ahead. Seems so often when we, well, pass any ordinance or regulation, there's always that conflict between what's good for the most and good for the individual, and individual rights versus, you know, public safety. I mean, there's just always, every law limits your rights and gives you more rights at the same time by limiting other people's rights to keep you safer, you know, whatever. So I'm, there's just, there's a tension here, clearly based, really driven by the fact that we have municipal liquor. And I'm thinking of the growler issue primarily here, that I know several people in my family, like my sons, who would be a little bit upset with me if I were to vote against being able to take growlers out. And yet, how can we do that in a city that has municipal liquor? I'm surprised we did that with the last restaurant, because you can't either have liquor going out off-sale or you don't. I mean, in my mind, I, I don't really get how we could have massive amounts of competition for our own businesses when we don't allow other liquor stores in our city, and yet suddenly we're allowing some, you know, small business to, to do exactly that, to sell off-sale growlers. So I, I kind of, I guess there's several issues going on. I mean, it's obviously brew pub versus taproom, that's, that's the first one I think we need to settle. And I would, I'm not sure if we're landing anywhere yet, but I'll just say that I'll, I think what I heard Brad say, I'll land with you on it and not necessarily with Sherry in that I, I understand from an individual customer perspective, you want to be able to get food, but I think it's a slippery slope that I don't know how to go down that one. And so maybe the way that the small little business does it with 20 seats is you have plaster all over your walls, your 20 menus, and order pizza and order, you know, and they get their food in, but they, people do it individually, and so they're not going there for the food, they're going there for, you know, the, the beer that's brewed on site. So I, I would land on that issue. I, I do think in terms of food, we need to keep taproom and brew pub separate, so if they want to sell 40% food or whatever, we land on there, then they have to go that next level of licensing. So I talked about growlers, I talked about taprooms, small rooms. I think that's, I think that's it.
If I could, oh, I was going to say the same thing. No, I wasn't.
Then I was just going to, quick on Councilmember Case's point, I think the growler, off-sale growler situation is a unique one that we should think about because the, we are one of the, the cities with municipal liquor that the other taprooms that I can think of off the top of my head, the five or six or seven that have opened up around our borders are not municipal liquor cities. So I think that's, you know, that's a point that, you know, we, we should consider as well.
Talk to me, I'm not sure I'm picking up, agreeing with what I'm saying, or then?
Right, that, that, that's, I mean, just a fair discussion point, because when we're talking about the off-sale growlers in the five or six taprooms that I can think about that are opening around our borders, those are not cities that have municipal liquor. So that's a good point, and that's something we should maybe explore.
I just don't see how we can consistently do that, I just don't get it. We're not allowing liquor stores to come into our city selling anything, beer, wine, whatever, but we're going to allow anyone that makes their own beer to sell it. And, and basically, it's, it's not necessarily competition with our, our city liquor store, it's not the competition piece, it's why do we have liquor stores municipally owned in the first place? We've gone through this public safety. I mean, maybe that question needs to be dealt with again, but whatever reasons we have it and went down that road seem to apply exactly to allowing little taprooms to sell off-sale growlers to anybody that comes in. It just seems to be.
So you don't like the idea of growlers, period?
I don't, off-sale. Well, I guess that's.
Unless you're going to tie a brick and.
I guess, I guess I don't. Well, you can, you can doubt it. You could shoot it. So, no, I guess I don't. And, and sadly, I mean, my motion, I do like the idea of it. I just don't see consistently in being fair, we have municipal liquor in Eden Prairie. I don't get how it could work here. I don't get how it works in any municipal liquor municipality. I just don't get it.
We might not make ourselves very attractive to a taproom or a brew pub if we don't have a growler.
I, I think the, what I, when we first started going down this path of drafting this, I, the reason I said I did the math was I wanted to see what kind of input, impact it might have on our liquor store, and was that a concern? And what I heard back was that economically, from a operating financial point of view, it's important for those taprooms to be able to sell off the excess, because if they don't sell it off, it doesn't get used.
Is there, is there, does it have to be all or nothing? I mean, I mean, could it be a limit? And I don't have a number in my mind at all, but, you know, 500 growlers a week? I mean, does it have to be a, no, you can't do it? Because there could be a number that meets that, addresses that need exactly, that does not impact the profitability of our liquor stores, and then also the safety piece. I mean, if you limit one grow, I'm assuming they limit already one growler per customer or something, I don't know that. But, well, I'm just saying then, we, we have reasons for municipal liquor, so let's not forget whatever those reasons are. We have reasons for that, and we need to make sure they consistently apply to this. And then if it's public safety, if it's the control piece, and if there's a, I mean, people of Eden Prairie benefit every year by a million dollars, which is 3% of their taxes, so if we get rid of municipal liquor, taxes go up 3% next year. So there is that money piece to it. We are, papers are, I was, okay, say addicted to liquor on some point in the sense of our taxes, and that's not a bad thing. I mean, and in the sense that we've been used to that, and people are now benefiting from that. The point is whatever reasons we had in the first place, we need to make sure to apply a certain. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to, to cap the growler so that it still addresses all the reasons we have municipal liquor?
Well, it, it's an interesting point that you bring up, and I think it is, it is going to have an impact on what we bring in at our liquor stores and what we can save our taxpayers in terms of what their taxes might be. But, you know, if you think about the reasons for having municipal liquor anyway, which we've talked about as being control, safety regulation, whatever, why do we allow any restaurant to sell any liquor then, on, even if it's on sale? I mean, why would not any restaurant bar be city-controlled?
But they're not taking liquor into their car, you know, the potential of abuse there that occurs when people open.
Oh, I certainly think.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, you can walk out of a restaurant drunk, but, but at that point, you can walk into the neighboring city and get drunk, and, you know, I, it gets, it gets weird at a certain point.
Yeah.
Well, if, if I could interject, Ms. Jeremiah reminds me that the zoning is different for a restaurant than for a taproom. Taproom would be industrial, it's manufacturing, and you can have 15%, is it, in the industrial devoted to other uses? So I don't know if the different zoning makes a difference in respect to the discussion about food, no food, located in different areas, but want you to have that information.
Councilmember Nelson?
Um, yeah, I, I do like the idea of potentially limiting the number of growlers. I think we have to address that, I don't think that's a done issue tonight. If you want a taproom to be able to have food, maybe it should have a percentage, like they can't sell more than 10% of their total in food, so that they still could have cheese and crackers or pretzels or something, but they had to limit that, just like the other restaurant has to sell at least 40%, they could only sell 10%. And that might solve your problem of allowing them to have something, a little something, and yet not compete with that restaurant. And if they want to have more than that, then they turn themselves into a restaurant.
Can, can a taproom currently put out food if they don't charge for it? Can they put out crackers and pretzels and peanuts?
It's not revenue, so.
Pardon me?
It's not revenue, I mean.
Well, the, the definition in the liquor chapter for sale of liquor is any method of a commercial transaction. So offering, you know, that, that's how we regulate. You buy a ticket to an event where they're not licensed, and you get a ticket, and then you get all your drinks free, you have to buy the ticket. That's a commercial transaction, so that's not allowed. So I'm trying to just think through, as you asked the question, is, is putting the food out there really the sale of food? Because you wouldn't, would you let me walk in if I didn't want a beer and just?
Eat free food.
Eat your free food? Probably not. So I, but I'd need some time to think about that, that's a good, good question, but I don't know the answer. It's likely that we could, we could define it in a way that would allow that to happen, that you can offer free food, and at that point, I'd say it'd be really quite a drafting job to try and limit the type of free food they offered. So you just, you know, pretzels and popcorn, but not sandwiches? Okay, not pizzas? Have, have we thought of it? You know, or only pretzels and popcorn? But yes, I mean, we could, it's likely that we could do that. It's also, I think that all the things that we've heard in terms of, obviously, you can not include in the ordinance the growler license, so we can say no growlers. You can limit the hours more than state statute allows. Because we have the 50/50 with respect to licenses, I think it's an easy answer that yes, we could put a cap on the percentage of food that is sold if you wanted to go in that direction, and all those are within your authority.
Councilmember Wickstrom?
Yeah, so I'm actually still advocating for the taproom, because I do think it's a model that Gen Xers and Millennials like, and I don't want to have a situation where we're pushing folks out of the city to go to other competing places. So I like Councilmember Nelson's idea about having, having sort of a certain percentage of food to alcohol sales that it's lower. But when I have been to taprooms, they often have appetizer-type foods, so there's something for them to eat that isn't packaged. It's kind of a Wisconsin model, I think, but anyway, it, it, it's a, it's a good model, and I think it's good for business, and I think it's good for business when we're wanting to attract younger people to our city. So that's one thing. And then the other thing about the growler, I think it would be a good idea to put some restrictions on it, but I don't think it's a problem having municipal, to me, to having a municipal liquor store and being able to sell a growler. To me, that feels different.
Mm-huh.
But I understand your safety concerns.
And just, I, just expanding again on the growler option, so my comment was simply, I think, you know, for our city, it's treading a little bit new ground, dealing with a growler situation under municipal liquor scenario, but I will check with other cities that may fall in that scenario. From a business perspective, as City Attorney mentioned, we felt that obviously the sales of growlers are only of that particular beer made at that location, and that, that, you know, theoretically, it could be taking money from the city liquor store, but that's not a product we could sell at the city liquor store, and it's kind of seen as the value added to the community as, Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom mentioned, as something that's seen as, something people want in the community. So that kind of outweighed that, understanding that most taprooms, almost all, have the growlers. And the one that's approached us, the one that would like to open in Eden Prairie, the one that's exploring, is not interested in food, but who's to say that a future one may be involved in food? But I just want to let you know, the one that's been talking to city staff is, is not talking about food, but maybe partnering with, with others as you see at other locations.
Can I, I don't want to butt in, because I know we have, Brad, you wanted to ask a question, but I wanted to piggyback on Sherry's. I thought you had said that most taprooms don't have food.
Um, that's my understanding, that most taprooms don't offer their own food, but that you can bring food in and they have menus from other, from nearby restaurants. Now, whether, you know, whether they have the snacky kinds of stuff laying there for people to.
They don't prepare food.
They don't prepare, that's what I'm, correct.
Yeah, the cost of putting together a commercial kitchen to do a whole restaurant deal, I think, would be pretty prohibitive for a taproom anyway. Okay, Councilmember Aho?
I was just going to say, you know, I think we've got a lot of questions about this. I mean, it's a new issue, it's something coming to us, we're hearing it for the first time. We've never heard this in a workshop, we've not really, you know, been prepared to talk about this. There's a lot of changes both in the state statute that just, are just coming online now in terms of number of hours, you know, hours of operation, et cetera. I don't think we're going to come to an, you know, a resolution here tonight, nor do I think it would be a good idea for us to sit here and come to a resolution as to what we want this potential ordinance to look like tonight. I think we really need to sit down and have a, have a meaningful discussion and really weigh each of these issues, you know, in a thoughtful manner, and look at, you know, look at hours of operation, look at growler sales, look at taproom versus brew pub, look at each one of these individually and say, what do we want in our city? And, and maybe have a workshop on this to really come up with what our, what our proposed ordinance would be, and then, then come forward with it. But I just don't think we're ready to, to sign off on something like that tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Case?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I want reasons to support the growler, I like it, I do. So maybe, we've raised lots of the issues and questions, can it be capped? Can it, certainly the people walking out, is that something worth looking at maximizing that, or whatever? Just looking at ways that, and, and maybe having Rick and staff look at, truly, it won't have a huge impact negatively on our liquor store business because we can't sell that kind of beer anyway, and, I mean, I'm just looking for ways to make this make sense. So I like your idea a lot, Brad, of having some kind of a workshop soon, ideally, I don't know if that's possible, that, because I do feel like this is timely and we need to move it along and get some resolution.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's my big concern here. I mean, we have a burden hand, it sounds like, in terms of taproom that would like to go in, and I would hate to lose that, because we're dragging our feet on whether it should be 40/60 or 45/55, or whether it should be 8:00 AM or 10, 10:00 AM. So if we're going to postpone it, I mean, we can pass this ordinance as is and continue to do study, change it a little bit, and vote on it at second reading, correct? Because we did that the other day with something. What was that? We did recently.
We've, we've had many ordinances that come for first reading and it reworks between first and second reading. The City Attorney had asked that, that, that if a first reading were to go through tonight, that the second reading possibly not be in two weeks, that it would be at some point in June or July, because we would like the legislature to, you know, adjourn and actually work through some of those changes. So I think the benefit of approving a first reading and still analyzing, spending time in a workshop, finalizing this before a second reading, would be that you would only need the one meeting for the final action, be it in June or July, if, if we have to. If, if we have to start with a first reading, that's just two meetings, and we can do either one. But, but just to let you know that the plan was not to bring back second reading in two weeks. It probably was going to take four weeks or more between first and second, but we can accommodate any of those options. But Mary, you're correct, we do have someone that is interested in moving on, on a taproom. I don't have the exact timing. If, if June's an issue, July's an issue, August is an issue, we would have to check with that person.
Well, I guess I would kind of encourage, it's up to the council, but I would encourage going ahead and doing the first reading, because I think a lot of this we are comfortable with, and we can, I think we need specific questions, really specific questions that you need to give staff that you want, that will help you make the decision, because I'm, I don't want this to drag on forever and we lose our opportunity here.
I'm happy with the motion.
Yeah, my only concern is that, you know, I mean, if you tell, if you tell a business, our potential business, you know, we're going to pass this potentially, this first reading tonight, but we're going to come back and reanalyze this, and we're going to potentially change it. No one's really going to want to make, make a decision on their business based on, on potential, you know, changes. I mean, they want to know, here's the, here's the law, here's the ordinance, I can count on it. And if there's any change, it's very difficult to say, well, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make this investment, not knowing what the future holds.
But I don't think they're going to make any plans on a first reading anyway. They would wait until the second reading is finalized.
So I guess then, then I, then I go to the point, well, why not really analyze? Before having a first reading without really figuring out what we want to do, why, why do that? If, if the time is not of that great essence.
Would you consider doing the first and second reading in one night?
Yes.
If the decisions all get made, or questions all get answered?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Russell?
I have an in-between suggestion, and it's never come up before, but I was just checking the ordinance to see if this was reasonable, that the ordinance requires a first reading, and then you have an adoption of the first reading, and then goes on to say that you, unless you get a majority vote, you can't have adoption unless it had been first introduced three days before. So it's been introduced tonight. So if you're uncomfortable voting on the first reading, we have still had a first reading of the ordinance. We've had a very good first reading of the ordinance. I say that sincerely. And the fact that you're not voting on it doesn't negate the fact that you've had the first reading.
Ah, okay.
So you could, at a later date, have the resolution in front of you to adopt the first reading, and that same night adopt the second reading, in my opinion, would be we don't need the unanimous vote at that time, because this, in my opinion, is the first reading.
That sounds like a good way to go.
The, the other thing that I would just comment, and maybe it's not necessary, because there'll, it sounds like there'll be a workshop, but also to not forget about the fact that this ordinance is changing the 50/50 to 40/60, and to get your input on that, and also the hours of operation.
Well, can we give you that input now?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you have comments about that, that would be good, because that would be helpful in terms of-
Are you fine with 40/60?
I'm fine with 40/60.
Yes.
So am I. Sherry?
Yes.
Brad?
I guess I'm fine with the 40/60, as long as, you know, as long as we feel that the business community would adopt that, and it would be a useful thing, and not, not, go against the reasons we had the original percentages in the first place.
I can tell you, I had many conversations with the Chief of Police about that, and he discussed it internally, not only with the City Manager extensively, but also with members of his department before he finally gave me the go-ahead to put that in the ordinance. So it's something that they discussed very, very thoroughly.
All right, I'm fine with it then.
All right. So we will not be taking any motion on this tonight. And I would just encourage you to shoot your questions to the City Manager or to our attorney, so that we can make sure that your concerns are addressed prior to our next discussion. Okay? Yes, Councilmember Case?
Well, just to help us, I mean, I skimmed through the ordinance with all of its highlighted, you know, sections. It really boils down to just a few key issues. We've got the timing thing, the pub, brew pub versus whatever. Could we just kind of see it as a laid out, these are the four issues, these are the three variables, and just smorgasbord, we'll just go down and pick, pick, you know, it just would make it really easy at that next session, having thought about it and investigated.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anything else to bring before the council? If not, is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.